Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's regular meeting of the Portsmouth Planning Board for April 21st, 2011. Before we start, if, I think we're going to need to share some mics tonight, so if somebody needs a mic, just make sure you slide it over so we can get a good copy of the meeting. I'll get right into the agenda tonight. Item one is the approval of the minutes from the March 17th, 2011 Planning Board Meeting.
Go move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the Chair votes aye. We'll now move into public hearings, and if I could indulge the Board, I'd like to make a motion that we read in, will vote on them separately, read in items A and B under public hearings and item A under city council referrals and requests. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the Chair votes aye. I'll now read in the three applications. We'll hear them as one, and we'll vote on them separately. Item A, the application of Bonhome Richard Realty Owner and Chinburg Builders applicant for property located off Kearsarge Way for conditional use permit application under section 10.1017 of the zoning ordinance for 4,997 square feet of work within an inland wetland buffer, including grading, residential structures, driveways, retaining walls, and drainage culvert pipe. Said property is shown on Assessor Map 212 as lots 118, 119, and 122, and lies within the general Residence B District. This application was postponed at the March 17th, 2011 Planning Board Meeting. I'll read in item B under public hearings. The application of Bonhome Richard Realty LLC Owner and Chinburg Builders applicant for property located off Kearsarge Way for final subdivision approval to consolidate lots 118, 119, and 122, is shown on Assessor Map 212 totaling 227,623 square feet and subdividing the lot into 20 individual lots varying in size from 5,053 square feet to 54,871 square feet. Said lots lie within the general Residence B District. This application was postponed at the March 17th, 2011 Planning Board Meeting. I'll now read in item A under city council referrals and requests. Letter from John Shagnon, P.E. of Ambit Engineering regarding a subdivision application for property located off Kearsarge Way which is tax map 212 lots 118, 119, and 122. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, John Shagnon from Ambit Engineering representing Chinburg Builders tonight on this application. Also with us is Dave Lozey from Chinburg Builders, who will be the project manager for this project, and Jim Gove of Gove Environmental, who did the wetland work and the conditional use permit application. You might recall, this application was before the Board back in October, October 29th of last year, where we received a preliminary planning board approval. I'm sorry, the application was filed in October, and November 18th, we received a preliminary approval from this Board for a 20-lot plus one-lot subdivision. The plan has changed since that time in that the lots 17, 18, and 19 are now three lots. The application you saw and approved as a preliminary application had four lots in that same location. Other than that, the road configuration remains essentially the same. The number of lots on the top is essentially the same, and there are other differences, though, that we'll get into through the presentation. But at that meeting, you also granted some waivers to the application for the length of the cul-de-sac, the radius on the cul-de-sac, and the pavement width. And we can go into detail on those if you'd like, but we went forward with those approvals. At that meeting, you had some concerns. One concern was the fact that we showed a driveway, the driveway for Lot 9, which is a lot on the existing frontage of Kearsarge Way. We had thought that that driveway might be in back of the lot via an easement, and there was a concern expressed by the Board because that driveway would be shared with Lot 8, whether or not that was appropriate. So a motion was made to refer that issue of the driveway to the Technical Advisory Committee. And also, you referred the application to the Technical Advisory Committee so we could work out all the details about utilities and other site improvements. The plan you see before you tonight shows a driveway which will exit from Lot 9 right onto Kearsarge Way. So we have eliminated that easement issue, and we've shown the driveway coming right off onto Kearsarge Way. We applied for a driveway permit from the Public Works Department for that driveway. They took the matter on advisement and did not issue a decision because the lot doesn't exist yet. So we're chicken and egg. When you create the lot, they'll adjudicate the driveway permit. In the meantime, though, as I'll go forward in the presentation, we have gotten all the requirements met for that driveway. So after your preliminary approval, we went to the final design. We got some soil mapping done. The plans you had been presented with for the preliminary approval did not show any wetlands. In the course of the mapping, where there was an old city street, and it's probably appropriate time to talk about this parcel, it was kind of unique in that it is on Kearsarge Way in an area where there was, or where there is, a bridge over the Boston and Main Railroad Track, which is southerly a butter to the parcel. At a point in time, the city, or the state, I believe it was the state, did some work either to create a bridge or to fix a bridge, and a temporary road was built around the construction site which crossed the property. That road is somewhat still visible today. Portions of the pavement are still there, but at that time, a city water line was brought in, and drainage from Kearsarge Way was redirected to the side of that road. So in the soil analysis that we had done, the site-specific soil mapping, there was an area that showed up potentially as a wetland. It was a, an area where the city drainage from Kearsarge Way drained out alongside the old road. Subsequently, though, after talking to the state about it, it was determined that it's not a wetland, it's a drainage erosion washout. So that area was dealt with. However, there's some wetlands, not on the site, but adjacent to the site along the railroad track, essentially a drainage channel wetland. And the wetland channel that's on the westerly side is connected to other wetlands off-site. So briefly showing you this overall vicinity map. And the blue is the area of the, the areas of the swale, and it's broken up by some uplands. This is where the old road crossed. You can see it in the photo still. This area does connect to this larger wetland complex. So under the Portsmouth Ordinance Wetlands Protection, that, since it is connected, this portion of the wetland does require a 100-foot buffer. So we didn't know that at the first instance of the preliminary approval, but you do have before you tonight an application for a conditional use permit for a small area of the project which will be in that 100-foot buffer. And we'll talk more about that as the presentation goes on. As I mentioned, we worked with the Technical Advisory Committee, and they were quite helpful in resolving a variety of issues relative to the site design, the first being the water line. Currently, the water line crosses the property that was installed, as I mentioned, when that road was constructed there. It still exists. It's, it's the main line that serves the Atlantic Heights neighborhood. The city wants to move that water line so it is not in position of development, and so it's also on city property. So part of this application is that the developer will be taking that water line and, at his expense, relocating it around the development site and reconnecting it out to Kearsarge Way. So that issue will be dealt with, with the approval of the subdivision. And the conveyance of the Lot A to the city, which was a part of the original application and will be a part of this application, we're asking you to approve that as part of this package. This area will be then city property. Additionally, we're running a new water line down the road to service the proposed lots. And during the construction of the Albacore Way project, which was approved probably five years ago now, maybe, a water line was brought up to a point that is off-site but not far off-site. So part of the project here is the developer will tie in this proposed water line to that stub and provide for more looping and better water pressure through the neighborhood. We worked on the utility design. The utilities will be brought in underground. We'll be tapping a, an overhead line, moving a pole here, and then bringing in underground power to service the development. There's gas in Kearsarge Way that will be brought in underground to service the lots. We will be constructing sewer infrastructure connecting to an existing manhole on Kearsarge Way and running sewer up the street. And I already mentioned the water. So it'll be serviced by all new underground utilities. The drainage has been worked on extensively in cooperation with the city. And the initial application, the preliminary application, we had identified this area here as a potential place for stormwater runoff to be collected and treated, and that is still the case. We've gone through a number of design alternatives, but essentially, the entire subdivision drainage, the road drainage, is brought down through an easement between lots 18 and 19 and delivered to our proposed infiltration pond. Additionally, the runoff that I mentioned earlier from the city street is also going to be directed around and down to the pond. There is a small area of the development, basically behind the houses, if you will, that will runoff directly into the woods because there's no way to act, to really capture it and bring it over to the pond. But what we're doing with this pond is we're treating not only the site impervious runoff from the roadway and the houses on the north side of the road, but we're providing now treatment for this off-site subcatchment area which runs through the street city collection system. We're going to be providing treatment for that area also as a part of our design. So the small amount of runoff here, that is roof runoff and backyard runoff that will go untreated per se, although we feel there is a buffer there, will be more than compensated for the additional currently untreated runoff that will be run through the pond on the site and receive treatment. The site has a proposed sidewalk on the south side. It then comes to the cul-de-sac and goes into the cul-de-sac on the edge. It's got a grass strip the rest of the way. The reason that we did that was to keep the cul-de-sac as, as small as possible but provide for the maximum amount of turning movement for fire trucks and other types of vehicles that would need to use the cul-de-sac. That cul-de-sac has been reviewed by the fire department and the school department and is appropriate for their vehicles. I don't know if I need to go through the layout, but basically, the lots come off. There's a frontage lot here, the rest of the lots will front on the proposed road. And the proposal is for single-family residences, one per lot. We went to the Traffic and Safety Committee in March, and they looked at the site distance both from this driveway for Lot 9 and from the proposed road, and reviewed that and approved the application, finding that there is sufficient safety in site distance at those two locations. We went to the Conservation Commission that same month, and as you know, they have advisory, they advise you as to the conditional use permits. And the Conservation Commission at that time did not feel that the project was worthy of your approval. They had concerns, and their concerns centered around the fact that in the previous design, the lots on the south side of the road had extended all the way to the property line at the railroad track. And their concern was that as the properties were developed and conveyed to the individual lot owners, there would be nothing that would restrict them from cutting the trees on this slope. And that was a concern of the commission's, that if you've looked at the topography, it is somewhat steep in that area, and it does provide, as I mentioned, some buffer for flow which will come off the roofs of those houses on the south side. So we talked to the commission about whether or not it would be appropriate to put an easement on the back of those lots to protect that buffer. And in further discussions with, with the city, we said, well, let's look at the issue. We'll do an easement, or we'll do a fee, whatever is most appropriate. And as a result of that, what you see here is a plan that shows Lot A, which was originally in the southeast corner, extending now all the way along that boundary. And that would be a dedicated fee transfer to the city so that those trees and that buffer would be under the protection of the city. If somebody cut a tree, they would be cutting a tree on city property. Enforcement would be much easier and much more direct than if they cut a tree in an area that was an easement. So we submitted the plans to Technical Advisory Committee, and based on the couple of meetings with them, working out the utility issues, they reviewed the plans and recommended approval on the 5th of this month, subject to a few stipulations which we'll review later. We went back to the Conservation Commission on the 14th of this month, and based on this new layout with the fee transfer to the city, they voted unanimously to recommend your approval of the conditional use permit as now shown in the flyer. So I guess I'll take a minute and review the plans and submitted material for your benefit. The cover sheet shows the relationship of a parcel to the context of the area. This is the cover sheet, but it shows you the same, same area. This is Route 95, Kearsarge Way. This is the park at the entrance to the Atlantic Heights. This is the senior housing project. Over here is Albacore Way, which has been constructed in the last five years, Spinnaker Point, and the railroad coming through here. The subdivision plan is the next sheet in the set. It shows you all the meets and bounds of all the individual lots, as well as some proposed easements. In order to provide for continued safety at the road intersection, since the road curves this way, we're placing a site distance easement on lots 9 and 10. We've got a utility easement in the back to allow for the extension of the water line off-site. We have utility easements here for the drainage, and we also have an easement here for the foundation drain for Lot 9, so we can bring that back into the drainage system on-site. Those are all shown on the subdivision plan. C1 is the existing conditions plan, shows the topography and features, shows quite clearly that road which had been constructed there and is now abandoned. Sheet C2, which is this sheet, shows the layout of the subdivision, shows the buildable areas on each lot, that each lot contains an area which is buildable. We also have delineated the proposed street trees. There'll be a number of trees planted sort of at each lot corner to provide some shade. This will be on the north side of the street, and the cul-de-sac, the middle of the cul-de-sac will be landscaped. So in this design, we've gone with not the standard pavement-to-pavement edge, or curb edge-to-curb edge paved cul-de-sac. We've designed it so there is a green space in the middle with some plantings. The next sheet, C3, shows the utilities. We mentioned all underground utilities coming in, shows the relocation of the water line from the existing path to the proposed path, which will be towards Kearsarge out and then down Kearsarge Way. Sheet C4 shows grading. And we're showing out that the site in this north or westerly edge is steep, so we're proposing to place retaining walls behind the houses. That will provide the break-in slope, so we do not, we will be able to leave as much buffer as we can. The walls will be six foot in height maximum. And also on this plan, we've shown all the grading for the entire subdivision. So you can see the houses, how they'll all be graded so that the water will be directed appropriately to the proposed infiltration pond. The next plan is C5, which is the conditional use permit plan. And this plan shows you the 100-foot buffer, which does cross lots 11 and 12 and slightly on to 13, but not in the developed area, and lists the areas that will be impacted in that buffer zone. So we have some impact for housing, driveway, and lawn area. So this gives you a detailed shot, shows you the retaining wall, side view, the erosion control notes, and how we will construct this so that we will maintain as much of the buffer as possible in as pristine a shape as, as possible. We're committed to the location of that wall. In other words, we're going to put it on that line. We're not going to move it when we go to construction. So this plan shows you exactly what the impacts are. The next plan is the plan and profile of the road. Then we have a soils plan, six sheets of details, and a driveway permit plan. That is the plan set. You should all have received a packet of information with the application, and it contains a response to the Technical Advisory Committee stipulation, which I'll go over later. Copy of the results of the drainage analysis. The results of the drainage analysis show that with the pond in place, we will be mitigating the, both the peak rate and peak volume of runoff to the railroad property post-development. Basically, the site is sloping from north to south, and all the runoff does go down to that southerly a butter. We also have in there a ma, an inspection and maintenance plan for this drainage system. It details what needs to be done to maintain the system. We have a soil report which outlines the soils, or sort of appends the S1 soil map. We have a report from the Natural Heritage Bureau that there are no endangered species or other concerns on the property. A letter from Unitil saying that they will service with natural gas. The traffic and safety approval. The letter from DPW that they won't review the driveway permit till you approve the subdivision lot. And then there's a couple of standard houses shown in there, just for your reference, but they are what the developer intends to build. The tax stipulated that, or made a recommendation to you that we do a number of things on the plan set. Those things have pretty much been done. I'll just run through them briefly. They wanted us to continue the curbing at this area of the entrance, just to the left as you come in. What we're doing here is we're placing a driveway so that it's on the city land. In the future, you'll be able to get down there to maintain the pond. And since that's not something that's done on a routine basis, we've actually gone a little further, and I apologize, I was going to put that in the packet, but we're specing a thing which will be actually, it's a system that shows as grass, but you can drive on it. It's called drivable grass. It's basically a collection of cement modules that are about two and a half inches square that are held together with wire. So it provides an area for soil and vegetation to grow, but it gives a stability that is needed to be able to drive. So while this portion is gravel, this portion, the developer really wants to make this an attractive community and didn't want to have that look as you came in, so that's a special feature of the design. And the city, we had originally shown a curb tip-down, but since it is used so infrequently, the DPW would rather just have the curb there and drive over it as needed. Second stipulation was that the, that there's be no open connections between the foundation drains on the north lots and the drainage system, and that, a note's been added on the plan to that effect. We didn't plan on connecting those foundation drains to the inside space of the house. Those are outside drains that just are perimeter drains, and so we had no problem putting that note on. The city wanted a note stating that the subdivision would be subject to the capacity you surcharge requirements. That's not a problem. That we'll work with PSNH for an acceptable solution regarding lighting at the intersection. There is street lighting proposed on the plans, and this light here, there is a note about that light. Since the street lighting is somewhat muted, it's only 12 feet tall. It's the same lighting that was approved for the Albacore Way subdivision, if you've been out there. We're going to work with the DPW and PSNH to see if maybe that intersection needs something that's a little taller. And unfortunately, we would not, there is a pole, a PSNH pole right there, but we couldn't put a standard Cobra light on that pole because of the equipment that's on it. So we'll have to work on an alternative solution, or we'll make it fit with the neighborhood. We'd have no problem with that stipulation going forward. The next stipulation was that, that we work with the city regarding whether the city should receive a deed. receive a deed or an easement to parcel A. And currently, what you have before you is what the staff has recommended, which is that the city be deeded parcel A. That's another thing on your agenda tonight, a city council referral, and we hope that you agree. I think that's the best way for this part of the project to be maintained in perpetuity, is the city owns it. The next stipulation was that we propose a location for a bus shelter for children. And we did that, we showed a bus shelter in this location, and actually, it probably should have been moved a little to the west, because we don't want to interrupt the site distance. But the school department representative was at the technical advisory committee meeting, and the gentleman indicated that they didn't know at this time, since the subdivision hasn't been populated, they don't know the ages of the children that would be in the Portsmouth system, whether they would stop the bus on Kearsarge Way, or bring the bus down and stop within the subdivision. So we think it's a little premature to pick a bus shelter location, and we also think that in some instances, it might be more of an attractive nuisance. And we would suggest that that stipulation be removed, and that the neighborhood could decide in the future, if it was appropriate to have a bus shelter. We've identified a place where they could put it, that is not on an individual lot. So I think we fulfilled the intent of that stipulation. The next one is that the, all of the easements be approved by the city legal department, and we've just got those deeds prepared. I have copies today, they have not been submitted yet, but we're anticipating submitting those to the legal department in the next day or two. And the final stipulation was that we prepare a construction management and mitigation plan, and we've added a note to that effect on the drawings, and we have no problem with that. It's standard for projects in the city. We want to work with the neighborhood to make the impact of the construction as minimal as possible. In addition, I would suggest that it might be appropriate to add a stipulation, that we obtain the alteration of terrain permit that is required for this project, because we are disturbing more than 100,000 square feet, although we are not disturbing 100,000 square feet with the roadway construction. And we could build the road, and then build the houses later, due to the desire to do it all at once, and to prep the sites on the southerly side of the road and construct the retaining walls. We went ahead and applied for the alteration of terrain permit. So it's going to be a one-step project, where the construction of the road will be in concert with the construction of those walls and the regrading of the sites to prep them for the houses. You might have in your packet preliminary review from the alteration of terrain people, we can address that if you'd like. I would like to go through at this point, the conditional use criteria, just to put it in the record. Gove Environmental's prepared a very nice binder to that effect, which you all should have, that went through and has appendices with all the material to support it. But basically, we feel that we meet the criteria for approval of a conditional use permit for the following reasons. The land is suited to the use. There's a section in there where we did a density analysis of the Atlantic Heights area, and this proposed density is in keeping with the neighborhood. It's zoned for this, the lot sizes are met, all the zoning requirements are met, so we feel that the land is suited to the use. There's no alternative outside the buffer that is feasible and reasonable. If we were to not, and maybe this is a better example here, if we're restricted from the minor incursion into the buffer on these back lots, essentially, we would have to move the road back, and it would not only affect these two lots, but it would affect four, possibly five, other lots. And that would probably make the project not feasible from an economic perspective, and that would be unfortunate, because the city would not receive the relocated water line on its own property, and also the other benefits of treatment to the existing stormwater runoff that has no treatment. The next criteria is that there would be no adverse impact on the function and values of the site and surrounding properties. And in the report, it's identified that the function and values of the wetland resource that's down here, adjacent to, the construction will not be impacted, or the function and values will not be diminished by the project. Alteration of the state will occur only to the extent necessary to achieve the construction goals, and that is borne out on this conditional use application plan. The houses are placed as far forward as possible on the lot. It does have a very, a five-foot front setback, or a 10-foot, so it's a very small front yard setback, so the houses are pushed way to the front of the lot. The driveways are small. The houses are also not overly big in size, so we feel we've done our best to pull away from the buffer as much as we can, and minimize any impact. And finally, that the, this alternative is the alternative with the least impact to areas under the jurisdiction. And what we would say is that this wetland area here, because it's connected to the bigger area, is now in the jurisdiction. The purpose of the buffer is to filter the water, so we've left as much buffer as we could in an undisturbed state. Only some roof runoff and lawn runoff will be in that buffer. It doesn't meet the State of New Hampshire definition, because it's not 100 feet long, or at this slope, a little longer, but it is significantly long and will provide some treatment. Additionally, we're taking the runoff from the rest of the development and bringing it over to the filter pond, the infiltration pond, I mean, and providing some treatment, and reducing the peak volumes. Additionally, we extended the protection, which is also pointed out in the report. The area that is in the conditional use buffer is just these two lots, but we've extended the protection to the next three lots. So, except for the part that has to be reworked to provide for the drainage infrastructure, the rest of the buffer is protected. So it's not only the buffer that is in the 100-foot, but we've added to that, and are protecting more buffer as we go further down the road. So unless Mr. Gove wants to add something that I've left out, that pretty much sums up our presentation for you tonight on the application. We ask that you grant us final approval for the subdivision, the conditional use permit, and refer us back to the planning board with a positive recommendation regarding the ownership of lot A, that it's most appropriately owned by the city, and be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for the applicant? Mr. Lenkensaw?
We're asking questions on all.
All of them, they'll be voted on separately, but anything's appropriate at this time.
This question may be more appropriate for staff, I'm not certain, but one of the points that was raised is the idea that at one point in time, when the bridge on Kearsarge was out, this property was needed for access to Atlantic Heights. Am I correct, that Kearsarge is the only way in and out of Atlantic Heights?
Correct.
Hypothetically, if there was ever a problem with that bridge in the future, for even a brief period of time, is there another access to Atlantic Heights, or how would you get back there?
I don't think that we've actually considered that. I'm sorry, the, this is, this property is private, so we actually don't have the ownership, we don't have the right, permanent right to use this.
Okay, so access, anyway. It was done through some sort of agreement with the, at the time?
Yeah.
Okay. Couple more questions. The property that's going to be deeded to this, or potentially deeded to the city, what would be the practice in terms of, would that property line be blazed or marked at the time that it's transferred? And I only ask, obviously, because of the reason for this, the desire to make sure that there's a buffer and it's not cut. Will it be clearly marked, so that it's clear where the city property starts?
Yeah, I'll have John answer that.
Sure, that's a good question. And we've tried to address that on the subdivision plan. On, in note to number nine, the developer shall identify the city boundary line by placing placard tree-mounted markers at each property corner and every 40 feet along the property line. So because the lots are about 80 feet wide, that would mean a marker on each line, and then in the middle.
Great, okay, thank you. And then, one more question. Part of our approval of the subdivision, is it approving this, the street name at the same time? And I just have a question about that. Obviously, all the names out there are shipnames, as I understand it. Just from a consistency sake question, even Albicore Way, I think recently, that's in reference to the sub. Was there any thought to giving a name to this street that was consistent with the overall plan out there?
Well, I think post-name choice, we did discover there's a Coast Guard cutter named the Laurel.
There you go, okay. That answers the question, then.
It's a 12-foot inflatable.
They only use it on the weekends, but, you know.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Guffert?
I just want confirmation, and I see it in the notes, and I see it in the inspection and maintenance plan. The operator is Chinburg, and the operator's obligated in perpetuity for how long to maintain this drainage system?
The operator will be Chinburg up to the time when it's transferred to the city. So I guess that's a good point, as to we need to figure out when that is, at what point that would be transferred, whether it's 80% occupancy, 60% occupancy, but under the construction sequence, that will be built first. So it will be built early in the process, but it will have to be maintained by the builder until such time as the city takes it over.
I want to say, if you look at sheet, it's like D, whatever your drainage one is, D1 maybe? It says, yeah, D1. It says contractor, the operator is responsible for implementing and following the stormwater inspection and maintenance plan, which can be found in the drainage report. And then you go to the drainage report, and there's really nothing in here that says "for so long as we own it." And I know my pal to my left is always requiring developers to have what I'm going to say is perpetual plans for stormwater and drainage maintenance, and reporting usually to the Public Works Department, right, Donald? That's usually...
As long as the developer owns it, yeah, but it's an interesting point, that at some point, the city's going to own it.
Well, when the land's conveyed, John, am I correct, that this, it'll be the city's responsibility at that point?
That's the understanding, and that's what we've told the city, is that it's most appropriate for the city to maintain this drainage infrastructure. It's not appropriate for a homeowners' association. It may be appropriate in most subdivisions, but in this case, it's a little different, because there is city drainage that's going to be treated by this. So at the end of the day, it was decided that it would be most appropriate for the city to own and maintain this.
And the city's agreed to that, correct?
The staff has, yes.
I was just going to say that we did discuss this in TAC, and the fact, as John said, the fact that a good percentage of the stormwaters going through the system is existing city stormwater that's not being treated now and will be treated. Department of Public Works understood that they, that the city would be taking this on, and we didn't want to have a homeowners', we talked about the homeowners' association option, to have a private entity managing, and we felt that it'd be much, much better management, have the city do it.
I'm right there with you. I think, I think then you've got to do a couple of things. One is, you've got a note on the plans that suggests kind of this perpetual maintenance commitment on the part of the operator, and you, I think the city and DPW will do what it needs to do. I wouldn't want to create through the planning process, something binding on the city in terms of maintenance requirements. I, yeah, so I don't know how we deal with that.
I believe that, correct me if I'm wrong, John, I believe that probably the alteration of terrain permit will require some particular management plan for that stormwater system anyway, to, just to make sure that it's properly, that the city will be required to maintain it if we own it.
Yeah, I, the notes up here in standard EPA notice of intent in NIPD's stormwater permits, the developers, or the developer's contractor will have to pull the permit and be the site operator. And then it says that you've got to notify the EPA after final stabilization, and/or turning control over of the site to another operator. So there may be a dual notification there, one being that the site has been fully stabilized, and then, and/or that it's been turned over to the city, or it's been fully stabilized, and now sometime later, it's been turned over to the city. So there will be that handoff of responsibilities.
And I think probably from a, you know, what did we agree to here kind of thing, that we need to be a little bit more careful about both the notes on these plans, that we may need to expand the note, so that that's clear, and then, you know, I'm, if the city has to bind itself to a plan for EPA purposes, well, that's the way it is, but I would be careful, you know. Let me just say that this, this thing, I don't know whether that's something that DPW has signed off on. It's perfectly reasonable, but it probably hasn't received the level of inspection from staff with the eye to, this is what we have to do. Like, it looks good for a developer, and I'm not saying we have different standards, but we do things in a more comprehensive way, I'd like to think, in terms of city drainage, and we want to integrate it into a full city plan, and I don't think this accommodates that.
If I might respond to that question. In fact, the city, DPW, did look at this very carefully. We actually redesigned this entirely to provide for maintenance.
Yeah, I should, I should be clear, I'm not suggesting it's a bad maintenance plan, I'm just saying that the way the city might undertake maintenance might not be this paragraph.
Yeah, and I'm trying to answer you. The city DPW looked at the plan and said, "No, we don't like that, because we have to maintain it. We want you to put the road here, so that we can get to that pond and maintain it." We didn't have this configuration in one of our designs, so we redesigned the site to address the DPW's maintenance concerns, the long-term maintenance of the pond. Is that getting to what you're asking about, or not?
I just, I mean, I, I'm, whatever the city commonly does, when it takes on some sort of stormwater maintenance project, ought to be what it does here, and so it might be, I guess, Rick, what I'm driving at is, this plan here, if it says, you know, as to the detention filter pond, that it applies during construction, or for so long as it's in the operator's title. And then, when it moves to the city, it's whatever the plan is for the city. And I, like I said, I don't see anything wrong with this plan, it's just, I don't know whether, and John's saying they did, but I don't know whether this plan is what the city would do when it's the owner. It might be exactly the same, or it might be different.
I think it is. I think it's just the wording of, when does the city take it over versus when does the applicant? When does that transition happen? There's no clear time established, I don't believe, on these plans.
Hasn't been yet.
Okay. But I think, I think John has, I think when DPW or the city takes it over, they're going to be happy with the way that this, this has been constructed, I believe, so. Mr. Coker?
Well, I'd like to follow up on that a little bit. John, you had submitted a document dated 13 April 2011 regarding request for final subdivision approval, blah, 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 blah. And on one of the pages, it says inspection and maintenance plan for Laurel Court subdivision. And pretty clear introduction. plan for Laurel Court subdivision. And pretty clear introduction, annual report, non-structural BMPs. But I'm really troubled by something, a statement in here under inspection and maintenance requirements. There's not a page number on it, so I can't refer to it specifically. But it says, just because a best management practice is listed here does not mean that it has been proposed for this particular project. So my question is, what is proposed for this specific project?
The, the reason that that is done that way, Don, is...
I suspect it's boilerplate text, which you cut and paste into, you know, every document.
Well, some of that. But, you know, we list all the types of BMPs that could be utilized because it's somewhat up to the contractor when they go to the site to follow the guidelines and install appropriate BMPs. Okay? So...
Who makes that determination, what's appropriate and what's not? That's what I'm getting at. I, I like to deal in specifics, not, not the whim of a developer, or, which is not to say that they wouldn't do, most of the time, what is right. But if you can save yourself fifty thousand dollars by not doing something and not really, you know, harming a whole lot, so be it.
Right, right.
So I guess my question is, what specific, what specifically are you guys going to do during the time that you own it?
It's a means and methods question. You, you don't tell somebody, well, it would be hard for us to tell a site work contractor, this is exactly how you are going to build it.
People do that all the time. We, we sit here with plans that show, you know, how it's to be built, and the height, and the depth, and the, you know, flows, and all the drainage analysis and maintenance.
No, no, I think you, you do, you have plans that show what is going to be built, but not exactly how, in what sequence. In general, there's a construction sequence, okay? But you don't want to not include, for example, storm drain and catch basin inlet outlets, okay, in your list of possible BMPs, because it might turn out that that's the most appropriate BMP to use. And you don't want the contractor to say, well, it wasn't in your thing, so I didn't use it. So that's why the wide net. As far as what this plan has for long-term BMPs, it's shown on the, on the drainage plant. Basically, once the site is built out and fully stable on...
Is it a sheet number?
C four. Once the site is built out and stabilized, there's no erosion coming from the lots. They're all down, seated, they're covered, the road's in, there's no eroding surfaces here. So you have a drainage collection system that brings it down to the sediment for bay. And that's going to be the major thing that will require long-term maintenance. It's designed so that the runoff, which is coming off of the site, which may have some sediment in it due to the fracking, sanding operations, it's directed to the sediment for bay, and that provides a place for those sediments to drop out before the water then goes into the infiltration pond. And the infiltration pond on the, in the design does, captures the two-year storm, the, the first flush storm, and it doesn't exit the pond. The only way it can exit is going down through the soil, and that provides treatment to, pulls out the sediments and other things from the...
I, I think maybe I wasn't...
So long-term, you would, you would pull the sediment out of the for bay occasionally, and then you would make sure that the surface of the infiltration pond is a working surface and doesn't claw.
Allow me to withdraw and rephrase, if I may. The city, during all of this building process, considering the city is going to own this someday, would the city be in a position to monitor even though they don't own it? Because, and the reason I say that is, is I would think the city would not want to inherit something that is untouched by human hands. You know, you get a grater goes around, does its thing, and then that's the end of it. And then a year or two later, it's turned over to the city, and it's not in the best of condition, and/or it needs an enormous amount of work. So...
Donald, the, if you look at the recommendation on page six of the staff memo, one of the recommendations is for the applicant to pay for the services of an independent oversight engineer to monitor site development, including the new street and utilities. And that's really for that purpose, to make sure that what we get is done correctly and is built, built appropriately.
Okay.
Similar to what, what we've required for the Meadowbrook development.
Okay. But I'm, I'm satisfied with that. That's, follow up?
Sure.
You, did I understand this same document to show the flow and runoff across the property line is, and this infiltration basin and all of that, the size for a ten-year storm? Or did you just say two-year?
No, I, I said the treatment regime that's required is a two-year storm. That's the first, called the first flush. That's what you treat for. This current configuration, I believe, takes up to the ten-year storm, and there's no outflow from that pond even up to the ten-year storm.
So let's say in the last five years, we've had two one-hundred-year storms. What happens when, not if, but when?
Mm-hmm.
It, we get a fifty-year storm, which, which goes more than the capabilities of this. Where does it go?
Right. It goes out the spillway here. So on the, on the west side of the infiltration pond, there's a spillway. So when it fills up to a certain level, it then goes out the spillway. And this is designed to be a long, sort of flat area so that it can perp that you sort of...
Which would be the two-year storm, which would cause that to overflow?
No, it doesn't overflow until after the ten-year storm.
Okay.
Up to the ten-year storm.
Is it normal and customary to size for just ten-year storms, or don't we do twenty-fives or fifties? And, I'm not in the construction business, so I don't know.
Regulations call up to a ten-year, correct?
I think that's probably the case. I see, we haven't changed our subdivision regulations as we have for site plan regulations.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, yeah. John, I'm, I'm sort of interested in the retaining wall. Kind of important to lots eleven, twelve, and thirteen, perhaps to the long-term stability of the homes there on. Doesn't seem like there's a lot of detail. We talk about detail and instructions for the contractor on this. And I'm thinking that there needs to be more, perhaps, engineering on this wall so that we can ensure its longevity. You know, I don't see, I mean, I don't know much about stone-laid walls, but it's going to serve a pretty important function here. Got a typical cross-section. It's not mortared. It doesn't show any drainage through it to relieve the soil pressure on the upward side, foundation base for it. It's just laying on soil. Was there any other thoughts to the integrity, what goes into this wall beyond what's on the sheet?
We're confident that it is a six-foot-high wall. We've shown the batter, which is a six-foot one. It's going to be dry-laid, so it will allow water pressure to be relieved. We're showing the batter here, and some well-drained material behind the wall. So we can certainly add more detail, but we're pretty confident that we'll be able to use onsite material and be able to construct that wall so that it's stable. But I guess if there's a stipulation that we provide more detail, that, that's not a problem.
And one more item near the wall is the fence. You, you did mention the code. I don't know if it really is actually applicable to this situation. But has there been any more ideas as to what type of fence you want to do?
I'll ask Dave Lozey to, because I think he's talked to you about the fence.
Yes, don't talk to me, but...
Dave Lozey, Chinburg Builders.
Yeah.
Yeah, I met with Roger Clemm on the, on the code, what we would do with that.
Yep.
And we can do, typically, if there's a wall and you've got three feet of flat area, and you have another three feet and you have a fence, then that meets a code that you don't have that three-foot fall area. So if we needed to put a fence, it'd be just an open rail fence that would meet the criteria for that, to go with the design, you know, open rail fence. But would be within that three-foot fall area.
Yep, okay. So you don't, you're not partial to any particular style of fence?
Oh, no, we're not. But we're trying to keep it with what we're doing with the whole development as far as the land streetscape and the landscape that we're trying to carry through as a theme.
Okay. So what wouldn't carry through that theme, I guess?
Probably a picket fence.
Okay, yeah.
You know, probably the open rail fence, some landscape. We're trying to keep that leveled area retaining, asking, going back to your question about what we're putting behind it. Typically, they do stone filter fabric so that doesn't, just dirt behind it for movement and all that.
What is an open rail fence? Right, like, like a posten rail?
Yes.
That's what you were thinking of?
We can, we can do that. You could do plants in front of it. I've talked to Roger what we can do for different themes on that. You could do three-rail fence.
Okay.
As long as we're within, with the fall areas, we're within that, we stay three feet. You can't have it right there on that point. And then you have the flat area of three feet in front of the fence. For if somebody wants to walk by, there's that six-foot safety area.
What's that?
That's not what that detail shows.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure.
Is, that's the wall. And you can have a fence up to it, or you can have a flat, without a fence, you can have three-foot flat area, and then a fence if you want, and then three-foot walk-in area. That's the code.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I've got a bunch of questions, John, but in no particular order. This, I was trying to follow a little bit of the utility layout. You've got a CB1A that comes down from CB1 that I couldn't find any information on it. I don't know what it is. Page C3. That one that goes between lots eighteen and nineteen? I don't know what that CB1A is. You've got big pipes going in, two pipes coming out. Is it, is the basin big enough to handle that?
Yeah. Some of that information is kind of scattered about the plan set. But if you look at sheet P1, P, yeah, P1. Basically, you have the, the main trunk line, put it down on the...
No, I've got all that. I just couldn't, where's...
South side of the road, south side of the road. When you get to CB1, there's a cross cover here, and a yard drain here that connect in. And then on the profile sheet, CB1 is shown, and there's some notes out there to CB1A is shown in a box. It's basically the box above station two fifty and three oh. So CB1A has an inboard in and inboard out, and it, two fifteen-inch PVC pipes.
What size is that catch basin?
It's going to be a bigger diameter catch basin to handle the two pipes.
What does it tell me that?
It tells you that on the detail of the catch basin, I believe, or in the notes. No, it says they're four-foot diameter. So, yeah, when the contractor tries to build it, he'll, he'll go back and get a six-foot.
Oh, we can just call it on the plants. That was my first question. I earned my salary for the month, John, so. Couple other questions. On section DD, the filter outfall. One of my, I think your drainage plan, by the way, is really good.
Uh-huh.
I just have a lot of concerns with the massive amounts of fills we have, twelve-foot fill. We have a couple of fourteen-foot fills. Section DD on the filter outfall, I, I'm kind of having Don's thoughts rattle in my head that we call out a clay loam, sandy loam, silt loam. Could we give some sort of proctor or something on that that, I know a lot of site guys that think a silt, could, could we give some spec on the, I know what you're looking for, for that material, and I think it's critical that we have such a big fill there, that we give them a, spell it out for them, in, in Don's case. Tell them exactly what they need. Give them a proctor, give them a sieve analysis, whatever it is. But I'd like to see a note that gives them a range for that, so when they submit to the testing company, there's no guesswork.
Mm-hmm. All right. Yeah, we do have the proctor on there, ninety percent proctor, but we could provide some ASTM specifications.
I think we need to give a range. I think we're going to, the city's going to take this over. We're going to have some long-term problems there with fills and stability. Any thought? I, I did a project back in a previous life similar to this, where my concern is, we're talking bus stops for children. I've got a real concern that nineteen house lots, that we're going to have kids running down in this for bay and drainage. Or was any thought given to any fencing or a gate at the roadway to prevent people from getting down in? And, you know, the backside of this is, ten feet, you've got a ten-foot drop. Are we worried about little kids getting down in there? Are we worried about water being in there? I mean, if this thing's full, you're going to have four feet of water in here that little kid falls in there could present some problems.
Yeah, it, it will be full for approximately six hours during the storms. So we have considered the possibility of doing some landscaping, especially on that slope. Maybe introducing some Rosa Regosa or something like that to provide a deterrent to people playing on those slopes.
Okay. Had you considered putting some sort of gate set back off the road so it's not a eyesore that, that may keep vehicles from...
Yep.
I just know these things, when they're full of water and you've got little kids and you've got four feet and places people shouldn't go, they always want to go. So that's one of my concerns down in that area, down there as well. So I won't tell you what to do. I would just suggest that that be looked at. And I think those were my questions. Mr. Coker?
Can I just follow up with your question? I, I wasn't sure that I understood John's response. You would, you had mentioned fencing.
Fencing.
Fencing around the, the area where, like, four feet of water. I heard a gate.
Well, I, there's two things. I'm not a big fan of putting things where you can't maintain them, such as this. You know, if we put some sort of landscaping, if kids want to get in, they're going to get in. It was twofold. There was some sort of deterrent around this for bay and, and detention area. Then another one was possibly a gate at the entrance so that people can't back down here. I mean, vehicles can get down there.
But I guess the problem is that if, if it is an attractive nuisance for kids, the city's going to have some liability, wouldn't you think? If kids get in there and play and one of them happens to drown?
Yeah, I don't know on, on that end.
I, I don't either. But it seems a fence would go a long way to, to making it more difficult as opposed to a gate.
Yeah. I, maybe that's a, a note that we have, where the city coordinate with the applicant. So that, again, if we take ownership, I, I don't, I don't want that kind of hanging over the city's head. I think those were my only questions that I had, John. So, any other questions for the applicant?
I'd just like to ask, you, you mentioned the AOT application, and we have this letter that the board has asking questions about the AOT application. You and I talked about this today a bit. Could you talk a little bit about some of the issues that could come out of addressing the concerns that were raised? And in particular, one of the, one of the questions is, the way the project is designed right now, we're creating a dam that would be subject to dam licensing, I understand, and we're trying to avoid that situation. We don't want to be, the city doesn't want to be operating a dam. And we didn't understand this until we just got this... And we didn't understand this until we just got this letter the other day. So there will be some significant redesign of this, and, you know, how do you see this proceeding after this, after tonight?
Sure. The, there are a number of comments that came through the letter to request for more information from the DES, Alteration of Terrain Bureau, and some of those are in regards to analysis points, the way we assign the covers in the pre and post, the worksheets we filled out, some of the assumptions we made. The most critical of the comments was comment number eight. And what the state has determined is that if you have a detention pond and the height from the toe of the embankment, which is the toe on the down slope side, the top of the berm is more than 10 feet, then it would qualify as a dam, irregardless of how much water is being held in it. In fact, at its peak, we're only holding 14,616 cubic feet, which is .33 acre feet. And so it's a rather small amount of water, but irrespective of that, the state would classify it as a dam. And our goal is to not have that classification, because it brings in a host of other long-term requirements for the city in regards to reporting and maintenance. So the solution is going to be to take the. Center area of the pond, this part of the pond is not 10 feet, it's only this little stretch here where the road cut went through. So it's a small stretch, and our plan is to take, create three sections of pond and lower that section, so it doesn't meet the 10-foot criteria. That will somewhat diminish the capacity of it. It was overdesigned, it held the 10-year storm, and didn't let it drop out, that's not required anywhere. So it's gonna change that, those somewhat, but it's still gonna meet all the rules that are required to be met as far as pre and post runoff. And the only other thing that I think, you know, the rest is notes on the plans, but number 11 suggested that we include a note regarding management relative to invasive species, and we haven't gotten confirmation about what that really entails in the long term. The statutes that are mentioned just talk about, you know, the desire of the state to eliminate invasive species, and when you have a construction site where you're reworking the ground, there's always a chance that invasives will propagate into the area. So that could be handled in a number of ways. It may, may be a short-term obligation with some maintenance back from, from the developer to weed out the plantings, to ensure that there's no invasives that are brought in in the initial revegetation of the site. If there's any other questions about the comments of a specific nature, I'd be glad to answer them.
Mr. Koker. Just on this April 15th, 2011 request for more information, how will all of these be addressed? Notes to the plan, or, I guess I'm a little bit confused as to, there's a lot of outstanding issues based on this letter, and I, I just want to make sure that I'm comfortable, if this should be approved, that there's some mechanism to make sure that these conditions, among others, are met, so.
Well, these conditions will need to be met. If you make a condition of approval that we're, you know, which you don't really have to, we have to get the alteration of terrain permit, or we, we can't build the project. So until we meet the, the conditions, we won't get the permit. So you'll know that the conditions are met. If you approve this within the condition that we obtain the AOT permit, then you could also instruct the staff to review those changes that needed to be made, and if they feel that they're minor in nature, then we could go forward. If they feel we should come back and explain them to you folks, then we would be glad to do that, but.
It's nice of you to frame the motion, thank you.
Doing my job.
Other questions for the applicant? I'll now open up the public hearing. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak two, four against the application. Second time, two, four against. Third and final time, seeing Norman Rozel, now close the public hearing.
We, oh, we taking these up separately, right?
We are, I'm, I'm sorry about that, Norman. Let's do, we will first, we'll be reviewing item A, which is a conditional use application. Mr. Koker.
Norman, please.
I'm gonna move to grant the conditional approval.
Second. Second, discussion on the motion.
Are there, are there any stipulations?
I didn't see. Not on this one.
Just no stipulations on the conditional use?
Oh, that's right, okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion on the motion? I'll call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye on application, public hearing A. Public hearing B is, excuse me, for final subdivision approval. We approved the waivers at the March 17th meeting. Was it November? We March, November, it's, no. I was doing Christmas shopping.
I'll take a stab at it. A move that we approve, the final subdivision approval contingent upon the conditions subsequent that are listed in the planning department memo. Second. Were there any, is there anything else?
Discussion on the motion?
I'd like to add a couple of conditions, especially in light of the DES letter, but if it's okay for the maker of the motion.
Absolutely.
We add additional engineering information, details on that retaining wall, if you provided prior to final sign-off, and, and also additional details, we need to come to a conclusion on the style of fence, I think that's important. And then it's very important that this, there's a redesign on the detention area, and as it relates to the potential for a dam classification be, be addressed to the city staffs.
Yeah, I'm really uncomfortable at this point. I, my opinion is that this is too much information, in my opinion, that we need. You know, when we get these plans, they should be to the point that there's a few stipulations, but we're asking for information, in my opinion, that should be on these drawings, so that's just.
Want me to withdraw the motion?
Well, look, I want to get everybody's discussion, and then, you know, we can, we can talk, Mr. Koker.
A question for the staff. Rick, would you consider number eight on this Department of Environmental Services' request for more information, the, the thing with the dam? Would you consider that, absent any other alterations to the plan, would you consider that a minor alteration?
Until I see it, I won't know whether it's a minor alteration. I mean, I've heard what John, how John has described it, but I just don't, I can't picture what it would be.
So I would go back to John's statement that there's an awful lot of information that's missing here, so.
That's just, that's just my opinion, I think when Rick bought up the retaining wall, that's a huge piece of this. I think, you know, my, my opinion, I'd, I'd like the applicant, I know they've met with staff, I still think we need to have a little bit more coordination on us taking ownership of that basin, and a gate, a fence, shrubs. I see the city could have a lot of liability and exposure on that basin.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I make a motion to table. Motion to tables is.
Takes precedent.
Takes precedent.
Takes precedent, and.
I think, I think if you're gonna do that, I think we want to postpone, not table, if that's, I think that's the appropriate motion.
Before I make that motion to the maker of the original motion, would, would he wish to withdraw his motion?
Yes.
And is that agreeable to the second?
Yes. So again, that's just my opinion, I, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but it just seems that when Rick's asking, well, let's add this, and the list of conditions gets larger, let's just get it on a drawing, get the dam permit, get the AOT, get, so that when we look at something and it's approved, we're not asking staff, we're not, I want to see this in its final stages.
So if one were to make a motion to postpone, we would postpone to a time definite?
I believe we'd postpone it to next month's meeting. I don't believe there's, I believe there's a lot of information, but I don't think it's a lot of information, it's gonna take a lot of time to do.
Should we instruct the applicant as to specific information?
Well, I think if he's been at tonight's meeting, I think he's got a pretty good idea of, of what we're looking for, just, I, I think, are you comfortable with what, what we're looking for, as far as additional information goes?
I believe I am, yes.
Okay, so.
You're comfortable, I'm comfortable.
If everybody spoke in their mind and.
Yeah, so I think you had a motion.
Motion to postpone to next month's planning board, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but.
19th, I think it is, May 19th?
Is it?
To May 19th.
Second.
And I'd just like, for discussion purposes, to say that I think there's somewhat favorable impression of this, and that we're just looking for these details.
Additional information.
Oh, no, no question about that, no question.
Yeah, I'd ask Rick if, if we can just get the applicant to just meet one last time. I think our staff does a great job, and, so, we had a motion and a second. Second? Did you second a page?
Sure.
I'll call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye, and we now need to go to City Council referrals and requests, item A, the letter from John Shagnon of Ambit regarding a subdivision application property located off Kearsarge Way.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest, since we postponed the subdivision, we don't have any land to transfer.
Correct, so we would postpone that as well?
Well, it seems to me that, I, I agree with you, that's the case, but I think that I don't, I don't believe that the land is, the lot is going to change as, as a result of redesign of the system itself, because the lot, so I think you could actually, just to move the process forward, you could, you could send that back to the city council.
Is that at all gonna be impacted by the retention pond that's on it at all now?
No, that's all within the land, it'd be.
And I think, and I think that when you look at the lots, the lots, the lot areas are so tight in terms of meeting the minimum lot area and so forth, that there really is not, not much room to wiggle as far as that, that lot area is concerned.
Ms. Geffert?
I totally agree, I don't want to hold up this conveyance, but I think it's important to advise in our recommendation that certain elements relating to the city assuming ownership and taking over control of maintenance and all of that are in the process of being worked out or something.
But that wouldn't change anything. Insofar as what we're referring to, the city council wouldn't change a bit.
In, in the arrangement around conveyance, you might change some of the conveyancing language.
Okay, I'll, I'll certainly agree with you, Mr. Koker.
I respectfully disagree. We have three things on the table. Conditional use, which we granted.
Correct.
A subdivision, which was postponed. And now a transfer of a piece of land. That piece of land has no boundaries, because the subdivision has not been approved. So in my humble opinion, we can't.
I'd ask maybe Anthony or ML if you could give us a little of your advice.
I mean, I think I agree with Don, I think it's just at this point, there's no need to, I would wait until we've got a subdivision plan that we're comfortable with, and we know what lot we're recommending the city accept.
I'll defer to you two on, so.
I, I think it just makes sense to wait.
We would postpone?
Guess so, yeah.
Postpone that?
Same motion, postpone until May 19th?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you, John. Okay, getting back to.
Should we save these plans, but there should be new ones coming back, or altered plans, or?
Some of them.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll be getting new ones.
Okay, thank you.
So items A and B under public hearings have been heard. Under old business, will now move to public hearings under new business, and the board's action on these matters has been deemed to be quasi-judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point, or it will be deemed waived. The first item is the application of Regeneration Park LLC owner for property located at 3612 Lafayette Road, requesting an amended conditional use permit under Section 10.1017 of the zoning ordinance for development within an inland wetland buffer, including the addition of a 12-foot by 30-foot shed, and the relocation of the previously approved generator and transformer. Said property is shown on assessment map 297, as Lot 3, and lies within the Gateway District. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, my name is Shannon Alther from TMS Architects. Back before you for this project, I've been here in the past. I have Eric Sari from Altus Engineers, who is here as well with us. What I want to do is just take a quick minute and explain what we are coming here tonight, and I actually have some information that we can slip into your packages, and I'll explain where those are, and then we can put those in. Just for reference, this is the outline or the footprint of the existing building of the site. It's property located at 3612 Lafayette Road, the old Porsche Toyota dealership. A reference here is Route 1. The entrance to the property is here, which is exactly where it is now. We have previously been before you and gotten approvals for the project, here tonight for four pieces. The specifics ones you're seeing are in orange. Transformer here, generator here, a 12-by-30 shed over here, and then actually, the other part two is a outside or exterior patio in relationship to the restaurant that we got approval for, for this particular project. We met with a conservation commission last week and received approval for these changes, and are here before you tonight to ask for your approval to make those small modifications. If you have any comments, questions, I'd be happy to help out or answer any that you may have.
Question for the applicant?
Yeah, just wondering what the purpose of the shed is.
Yes, good question. The, one of the issues that we've had, and I know I've said this before, I think, in a couple of the meetings, is that there's low water pressure out in the street. It's the end of the line in terms of the, the public water supply, and we, because of the restaurant, we put in sprinkler systems, are required to have sprinkler systems. We couldn't get enough pressure from the street, and we had looked at some different options, and ended up with basically three 2,000-gallon tanks inside the building, and so those are located roughly here in the building, which took up a substantial amount of area that was mechanical and storage space. So we're asking now to have the storage space in the back there because of the tanks.
So those are water, you said?
Water tanks, yeah, and that would allow for the supply of water for the restaurant, sprinkler system specifically, so if there was an event, we would have the appropriate amount of water, it's been designed, so we have the volume that we need to put out an event, I think, over a 45-minute period.
What's gonna be the construction of the shed?
Actually, I have some elevations, basically the, the building that's there now is a combination of cement block with stucco and then metal. I'm proposing that we do a metal shed, basically roof and walls, as well as the sidewalls, basically all the walls would be metal, I can pass these out as well, these are a smaller exhibit, but you want me to pass mine? And then just maybe to add one more thing, a discussion that I had with Rick Taner earlier this week. We, when we were in Prepack, a couple weeks ago, we talked about access to this particular restaurant patio. The city had recommended having access here, and we also wanted to have access on this side where there was a sidewalk. And on my plans, I didn't actually show or highlight the arrows as to where those entrances and entrances will be, which I fear I know appropriated in the office director, but basically the site plan, I have two additional pieces that were flipped into your sets that just represent those entrance locations that weren't on there previously.
Blasted the poor guy's eardrums out. Can you hear?
Is this all, is that your presentation, are you?
Yes, I'd be happy to take questions.
Questions, Mr. Blunkensaw?
Is there gonna be any landscaping around the generator? Does, is it possible to even landscape around the generator?
Yeah, we, we can. In the landscape plan that we have for the project, we were keeping the landscaping pretty minimal, and maybe just as a reference, what you're seeing here in green, kind of with two different shades, represents new landscape grass, conservation mixed grass, where there was existing pavement. Since it was an automobile dealership, basically it was paved right to the edges of the extents that you see here. So we're coming in, removing the pavement, and then adding in grass. So we do have grass in here. Originally, it didn't have any shrubs around the generator. There is some clearance issues in terms of the exhaust and stuff, but I'd be happy to, you know, put some landscape there. When we spoke to the Conservation Commission, we didn't get into specifics about that, so I may have to go back and just, you know, mention that adjustment if that's something that the board wishes.
Any other questions for the applicant?
It's not a question, but it's just with respect to Anthony's question. This is just the amendment for the conditional use permit. They're gonna have to come back again next month for the amendment to the site plan because they missed the deadline for the, for that, so you can ask, actually ask that question again next month.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, sorry. Yes, thank you, I forgot to mention that part.
Any other questions for the applicant? No, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now open up the public hearing. If there's anybody in the public wishing to speak too far against the application, second time, third and final time, saying no and rise, I'll now close the public hearing. We are. This is for amended conditional use, is what we're considering. Mr. Blunkensaw?
Make a motion that we vote to grant amended conditional use permit approval as presented.
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion? I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposing, the chair votes aye. Thank you. Go to item B under new business, the application of William L. Pingree owner for property located at six Sagamore Grove, requesting a conditional use permit under section ten point ten seventeen of the zoning ordinance for development within a tidal wetland buffer, including the relocation of five hundred fifty-two, of a five hundred fifty-two square foot garage into the wetland buffer, the construction of a five hundred and forty-two square foot addition, a two hundred and seventy-six square foot addition, and a sixty square foot entry, the removal of five hundred two square feet of paved driveway. Said property is shown on Assessor Map two oh one as Lot Five and lies within the single residence B district. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Bernie Pilich, on behalf of Dr. Pingree, William Pingree, who's here with me, as well as John Davis, our engineer. This plan that you have, and one I just passed out, has changed since we went to the Conservation Commission last week as a result of some suggestions by the Conservation Commission and some stipulations, and as such, I'll just go through it very briefly. This is the existing location plan. The Pingree home is at the end of Sagamore Grove Grove. It's basically surrounded on the three sides by Sagamore Creek. It's one point twenty-eight, almost one point four acres in size. If you've had an opportunity to watch, there it is. Heavily forested with a pine forest, all in this area. This is where the leach field is, which is the lawn area. The house sits within the hundred foot setback tidal buffer because it predates obviously the tidal buffer zone. This is where the existing home is. This is the existing garage. As you can see from the first photograph in your packet, Mr. Pingree's had some severe snow conditions out there this winter and found that at times it was difficult for him to get from his home to the garage. As such, he's proposing to pick the garage and move it to this location and connect it with an addition so he can access the garage internally. He's also proposing a small addition to the garage. When we first met with Peter Brits, Peter suggested, made some very good suggestions and said if we could get rid of some of this hot top, this circular driveway, which is within a hundred foot buffer, it would be good. We are eliminating all of the hot top here within a hundred foot buffer, which is about nine hundred square feet of hot top that's being taken out of the hundred foot buffer. We're adding a little more, approximately two hundred square feet more of impervious in the hundred foot buffer with the, the addition in the relocated garage. But it's clean stormwater runoff, and when we went to the Conservation Commission, they suggested a couple of things, diverting water away from Sagamore Creek. So now we have created a rain garden here where the old garage was located, and the roof runoff from the addition and the new garage will either go into the rain garden or into this drip edge channelization here so that it does not flow towards Sagamore Creek. And then we also have a, a one-page detail of, of the rain garden. We believe that it does meet the criteria for the board to grant the conditional use permit. The first, obviously, thing we have to demonstrate is that the land is reasonably suited for the use. Dr. Pingree's property lies within a residential district. The use is, proposed use is residential, the existing use is residential. The lot is large in size, heavily vegetated. There is no change whatsoever to the vegetation between the addition in the garage and Sagamore Creek. Taken down about four, four trees to put the addition and relocate the garage. Majority of them were ornamental hemlocks that were planted and by a previous owner for landscaping. There is one large oak tree which is, has rotting in its base, which is being removed, would have to be removed for the relocated garage. We're not gonna be require, removing a, any substantial amount of vegetation. In fact, the area where we're placing the addition in the new garage is shown in the second and third photos, which is presently a rock garden which was created on top of a ledge outcrop. There's a lot of ledge there. It's gonna be difficult to relocate the garage, but where the ledge outcrop is, they obviously put some loam and made a rock garden out of it. There's no alternative location, second criteria, outside the wetland buffer that is feasible. Because of the location of the house, if you're going to put an addition on the house, it's, it's gonna have to fall within that hundred foot buffer. This is the hundred foot buffer line. As you can see, the house is well within it. It's actually within the fifty foot buffer line. So it's, it's not possible to relocate or an alternative location which would meet the needs of the, of the applicant. We believe there'll be no adverse impact, which is a third criteria, on the wetland functional values. In fact, we think they're probably gonna be improved. We've taken all of the impervious hot top out of the hundred foot wetland buffer. We have put impervious here, but we've also channelized and redirected all of the stormwater, so it's not flowing to the creek, it's flowing towards the rain garden. Which should improve the, the impact on the, on the functional values of the wetland from what exists there now. Fourth criteria, the alteration of the natural vegetative state or managed woodland will occur only to the extent necessary to achieve construction goals, and as I indicated, and as you can see from the photographs, this area here is, is pretty barren now where we're gonna put the addition in the, in the relocated garage. We're removing, as I said, four or five trees, but none of the heavily forested area, which is one of the greatest features of the lot, is gonna be affected at all. Finally, the proposal is the alternative with the least adverse impact to the areas and environments under the jurisdiction of the, the ordinance, and, and certainly, we believe it's the most reasonable and feasible alternative, and we've tried to design it with the help of plenty of department staff and, and the Conservation Commission to have the least impact. We've removed that, that hot top. We've redirected stormwater runoff from the rooftops in the new impervious area to the rain garden, and as such, we believe the proposal is the alternative with the least adverse impact. And hopefully, you will agree and grant the conditional use permit. If you have any questions, as I indicated, that Dr. Pingree's here and, and John Davis, our engineer, is here also.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to point out, I just handed my copy of the plan to Peter Brits, environmental planner, who's in the back room. We hadn't had a chance to review it before tonight's meeting, so if you have any questions, he could probably answer some of them, too.
I've got a question, Bernie. I'm a little troubled that we're removing existing pavement, but there's no instructions to the contractor to tell him when that pavement's removed, what he's supposed to do? Does he loam it? Does he give it a wetland seed mix? Does he?
Yeah, we can, we can certainly put a note on there that it's gonna be loam and seed, yeah.
Okay, and if there's any special seed mix we need because of the location, I'd like a seed mix spec, maybe a little detail showing what the depth of the loam will be, that sort of thing.
Okay, we can certainly add that to the plan. We put it added to the detail sheet.
That'd be great. So, Mr. Coker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Bernie. Nice to see you. We haven't seen you in a while. Where you been?
Oh, I've been around.
Just a couple of curiosity questions, more than anything. The addition, not the garage, but the addition, what is that going to be used for? I actually have a reason for the.
Basically, to get from the house to the garage, so you wanna add some storage. You had no basement, but.
Yes, that would be the other thing that I'm trying to accomplish.
Just get your, your name and address, so we have it.
Bill Pingree, I'm the applicant. This house was built on ledge, so my cellar is minimal, and I have no attic, so I'm driving over screens and snow blowers, and I got furniture stored everywhere. I basically need more storage.
So it's basically storage?
Correct.
Okay, and the other question, which is curiosity, and maybe, maybe you can, there's a notation that there's a, a lot line that's going to be abandoned, which really doesn't have anything to do with this application, but I'm just curious to know, is that gonna be some other, some other lot line revision that'll come here later?
It's in the process of being done. It was, it was requested by Craig Seavey that I sell him a piece of land to add to his lot, and I agreed to do that.
Excuse me, we saw that last month. It came before us last month.
We did?
Yes.
You're right. Thank you, thank you for refreshing my memory. I had trouble remembering what I had for breakfast.
We couldn't decide whether we'd leave it on here or not, but it hasn't a hundred percent gone through, so we decided to leave it on.
Okay, that, just a curiosity question, that's all. You're right, we did see that last month.
Mr. Blunkensaw?
I'm not sure who would answer this question, but what exactly does a drip line trench do? I mean, what, does, does it direct water to the rain garden?
It's a, it's a drip line infiltration trench is what it is. It functions the same as a rain garden, only it's just, there's no vegetation, it's peystone, and the water just, rather than running off, it collects in the, in the infiltration trench and then slowly absorbs into the, into the ground.
So the trench and the rain garden are sep, have separate purposes, they're not otherwise?
Well, they do the same thing, but that part of the roof, it may be difficult to get the water to go all the way over to the rain garden.
Okay, great.
Because it's kind of uphill and then down again.
Okay.
There's an excellent, and this came from a publication that DES put out in March of this year. It's about a sixty-page publication. It's called Stormwater Management for the Homeowner, and I ran off a copy for, for Bill, and in addition to how to build your own rain garden, they have the, the drip line, which we all used to call a French drain, which is basically the drip line infiltration trench, which was in that booklet, and, and so that was the alternative that Bill used for that, that side of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
Or just a.
Mr. Rice?
Point of information, did the Conservation Commission sign off or bless this drip line trench and rain garden?
They, Peter, I, I don't want to speak for the Conservation Commission, but they, we discussed, they suggested the rain garden, we put the drain, rain garden in, and in fact, Peter may, one of the Conservation Commission members mentioned the French drain, the drip line trench. Go ahead.
Hi, Peter Brits. Yeah, the, the Conservation Commission was willing to approve the plan, but wanted some, they didn't want to specify exactly what the applicant did, but they wanted to make sure that that water didn't flow, sheet flow to the creek. They wanted to make sure it got into the ground, and it looks like they've done a nice job addressing what the Conservation Commission was concerned about. The only comment I would have is, and maybe you saw it somewhere, the specs on the mulch for the rain garden, sometimes the mulch, it has to be like a hardwood mulch. You might want to go to the Stormwater Center at UNH and get the spec, unless you have it, but sometimes when they put those in, the mulch floats away, so. But otherwise, it looks like what the Conservation Commission was asking for.
Thanks, Peter. Any other questions for the applicant? I'll now open up the public. If there's anybody in the public wishing to speak too far against the application, second time, third and final time, saying no and rise, I'll now close the public hearing. Second, any discussion on the motion?
Do you want detail on the loam at the end of the driveway?
The mulch?
No, not the mulch, but.
Oh, yeah, we'll just, they'll provide us with a detail that shows what goes on once the pavement's removed.
Type of seed mix.
Loam and seed detail, and maybe give us a, a spec for the mulch for the rain garden as well, just so that, that we know.
Not a problem. We can add it to the detail sheet.
Super.
Any other discussion on the motion? I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposing, the chair votes aye. Thank you, Bernie. We will go to our last public hearing of the evening, which is item C under new business, the application of the city of Portsmouth owner in Verizon Wireless, Selco partnership applicant for property located at six eighty Beverly Hill Road, requesting site plan approval to attach antennas and cables to an existing telecommunications, telecommunications tower and install a twelve foot by thirty foot equipment shelter and propane tank with related paving, utilities, lighting, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan two fifty-four as Lot Eight and lies within the municipal district. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
My name is Jim Valeriani, Mr. Chairman, Regional Permitting Attorney for Verizon Wireless. Good evening to you and to the board members. We are here seeking site plan review approval for our co-location on the existing tower behind the DPW facility next to the, to the recycling facility. That tower was permitted and constructed about ten years ago. Since that time, three other carriers have co-located equipment on that tower, and Verizon is here for a similar approval. Our facility is a twelve by thirty shelter with switching, radio, computer equipment inside, a standby generator as well, that would only operate during a prolonged power outage of six hours or more. We do have standby batteries as well inside the shelter. The facility is unmanned. The location for the tower is a gravel-covered eighty foot by eighty foot fenced compound. Technician visits to the site would be approximately twice a month. Utilities already exist at the site. We would just have to route them underground inside the compound. Again, the gravel, the, the compound is gravel-covered. We are outside of the hundred foot buffer zone. We are outside of the 100-foot buffer zone to some wetland area in the back, and that's been confirmed by the, Mr. Brits of the Environmental Conservation Group. And in fact, this application that's before you, was before you two years ago. We had allowed it to lapse due to other projects that Verizon had underway elsewhere in New England. As you can imagine, we have hundreds, if not thousands, of sites in the works. And so we would like to get this one refreshed, in order to do so, we had to reapply. So again, 12-by-30 shelter, unmanned facility, no water sewer hookups. What actually triggers our appearance here tonight is our shelter. It was deemed by the Planning Department, and I think Portsmouth Legal, as being a building, an increase in buildable area at the site. The, excuse me, the other carriers do not use shelters, we use it for security purposes, and because we have much more equipment than they do. So it's the same set of plans that was before the board two years ago. I have additional copies, if you do not have any in front of you. But there's plenty of room inside that compound for us and for any other future carriers.
Questions for the applicant? I know it's not part of this application, text you say visit twice a month?
Approximately.
To do, and I'm just curious, to do what? What do they do?
Oh, they just monitor the equipment, just make sure that the equipment is monitored, computer technicians.
Okay.
It's a secured shelter, it's locked, and it's got security and high heat alarms that connect to our network operations center.
Okay, and that generator, does that start once a month, self-start?
That's a very good question. It would go off once a week for about 20 minutes during, we have a time for late morning hours, for just 20 minutes to keep the engine maintained. But thereafter, unless there was a power outage of six hours or more, that's the only time it would be run. And we are fueling it with propane, notwithstanding we're outside the wetland buffer. We want it to be on the safe side and not use diesel fuel for it.
And that's monitored remotely as well, somebody knows when it starts, when it stops?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Coker.
Just a clarification, this could be a typo, but when, see, Old Business, and this was a TAC committee, it's noted as a 10-by-30, and you're there to 12-by-30, I'm assuming it is a 12-by-30.
It is a 12-by-30, I don't know what the oversight was. And there were just some minor conditions the last time around, that we ensure that DPW gets final plans before any construction starts for their approval, that we notify DPW one week before we start any construction, and that the propane tank meet the National Fire Code, which it will, and we'll make sure the building inspector. The only other permit is a building permit after this review.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now open up the public hearing, if there's anybody in the public wishing to speak two for against the application. Second time, third and final time, seeing no one rise, and now close the public hearing. Mr. Coker.
Mr. Chairman, move to accept as proposed.
Second. Second. Any discussion on the motion? I'll call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one thing, the building inspector will need your load calculations for the antenna and the annu-
Very good point, yes, a structural update would be required in connection with that permit.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening.
We'll now move on to City Council referrals and requests. The board's action on these matters has been deemed to be legislative in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point or will be deemed waived. Item A, we read in our first, under A and B, under Old Business Public Hearing, so that's been acted on. We'll go into item B, under City Council Referrals and Requests. The letter from Attorney Robert Chiandella regarding a zoning amendment to Section 10.440, Use Number 19.40, to allow by special exception, drive-through facilities as an accessory use to a permitted principal use in the Central Business A Zone.
Mr. Chair. This is not being a public hearing at this point, it's simply a referral from the City Council. And so it's, as I noted in the, I'm not sure I noted here, I did make a note, I did note, that you could actually decide to make a recommendation on this tonight, or you could put it off for a work session or a public hearing at the next meeting. The, this is basically a request to change the table of use regulations. Basically to change from an N to, meaning not allowed, to a S, meaning special exception, to allow a drive-through facility as an accessory use in the Central Business A District. And provided for you on your memo, an outline of the areas that would be affected by this. Fairly limited, there are two Central Business A districts. One is the area of the strip of buildings between Bow Street and the water, and between Market Street and Siri Street. And there's absolutely no possibility for doing a drive-through facility in those sites that would meet our standards. So the area that would really be affected is the area shown in this plan, the portion of the Central Business A District in the northern tier, basically Maplewood, Vaughn, Green Streets, and then Nobles Island. This, the applicant in this case is the owner of the building that was formerly the Portsmouth Herald Building. They have proposed in the past a bank building on the corner of Maplewood and Rain, Maplewood, Raines and Vaughn. That, it's, if you're looking at the map where it says CBA, it's the area immediately to the right of the CBA. And it's, they applied to the Board of Adjustment for a number of variances to allow that to happen. The Board of Adjustment determined that since the city had just recently amended the zoning to prohibit drive-throughs in that area, and that there did not seem to be a hardship, any special condition about the lot that would justify a variance, they denied the variances. I advised the applicants that it would be unlikely to, even a revised plan that showed a drive-through would be unlikely to meet the objections that were of the Board of Adjustment when they denied the initial variance. And that the better approach would be to directly address the policy issue of whether you want to have drive-throughs in the downtown area. And this is sort of the periphery of the downtown area, but it's an area that we've identified as part of the downtown, and we've prohibited drive-throughs in. So with that as background, I did not make a recommendation in this situation. I wanted to, it's a policy issue, I wanted to give you the opportunity to discuss the policy issues and decide whether you have enough information at this point to make a recommendation to the City Council, or whether you need to have further discussion on it.
Mr. Coker.
When I saw this in front of the Board of Adjustment, I frankly didn't understand why they turned it down. I guess my only concern would be that if this goes to the City Council with a favorable recommendation, special exception means it goes to the Board of Adjustment, not the Planning Board.
No, it goes to the Planning Board also.
It will go to the Planning Board.
It'll come to the Planning Board through site plan review, after it gets a special exception.
Okay, because I, but they would have to do a special exception first?
Yes.
Okay, and again, frankly, I was dumbfounded that that wasn't approved, because there was really, frankly, no reason not to approve that specific application. I mean-
Could I respond to that? I disagree with you. I think that the, I mean, the board and the city specifically adopted a zoning change effective January 1st, 2010, to prohibit drive-throughs in the area. And in order to get a variance, you have to prove that there's some hardship that prevents you from using the property without the drive-through. And there was just no way that that could be done. There's plenty of uses in the downtown on lots like that that can be done without a drive-through. So there's really no, given the fact that the city has specifically stated they don't want drive-throughs there, and there's no special conditions on the lot that prevent them from using it as a retail store, or a pharmacy, or something else that doesn't require a drive-through, then the Board of Adjustment really could not grant a variance.
Okay. Ms. Geffer.
But I think your point is, this particular spot isn't necessarily overburdened by a drive-through, is that correct?
I just felt it was a reasonable use of the property, that's all.
So he's taking the policy position that you were asking for.
Right, so that's why I asked him to come to you, to make a recommendation on the policy. Because the policy right now is no drive-throughs in that area, and so they're asking to change that policy.
And I would support that.
Ms. Roberts.
And I would be strongly opposed to changing the policy.
No fries for you.
I would also agree with you, Ms. Roberts, I'm opposed to it as well, so. I'm opposed to it as well, so.
Might I ask why?
The unintended consequence.
But it still has-
Sound good, does it sound good?
Sounds familiar.
Sure.
But we also have two shots at it. One, the Board of Adjustment, and two, the Planning Board.
Well, once it's approved.
Right, what if they're selling sausages out of there?
At this point, there's just no need, we don't-
I don't know, I just think that, in my opinion, I don't know what Paige's reason is, but I just, I, there's something out there lurking that we're just not seeing right now that could-
Okay. I am not going to be on the receiving end of another eight-to-one vote. We know that'll happen. Eventually, yes.
The year is young.
If I might ask Paige what's your reasoning, if, just so we can get, we can hear it.
I just don't feel that it, in any having drive-throughs contributes to the health of the downtown. I mean, we've got enough of them, and it's really, it's not the direction that we want to be moving in terms of our site plans.
But we're not talking about, you know, someplace like, I don't know, the Starbucks down, right down to Market Square.
I don't really care, I mean, I just, that's not where we want to be going. I mean, it's actually, doesn't contribute in any way, and we want to be improving things. And that doesn't seem to me to contribute to the landscape of the downtown.
I guess we'll have to agree to disagree.
Any other, anybody else have any other? I'd like to get as much input on these as we can.
It's something I thought about, and I would oppose to it. I look at it as safety concerns, as the north interior gets more developed, you're going to have more pedestrian traffic. And that's just more traffic, vehicle traffic going through sidewalks and curb areas that people soon be walking on.
It's a great point, too. How are you feeling now, Don?
It's gonna be, what's it, eight-to-one?
You know, again, we've got a referral here for City Council referral and request, so.
Is there any way we can change that? I mean, is there any wiggle room in this at all, or is this a straight-up, straight-down?
No, I believe that there is, if I may, the ability to, there's the ability to do different things. You have, there's a lot of opportunity here. There, the City Council is asking for your recommendation. Your recommendation could be, could be modified. For example, I fully expect that when we come to the next set of recommendations on parking changes, that there'll be lots of modifications to, you know, it won't be a strictly up or down. There'll be lots of opportunity for changes. There are many ways this could have gone. It could have gone by saying rezone from this lot from CBA to MRB, for example, in which case there would be a lower density, but the drive-throughs might be permitted. I think they're permitted there. Or maybe they're not, I can't remember. But the, you could look at different zoning districts, you could look at, you could put conditions on drive-throughs. You know, you could say drive, they would be allowed by special exception, provided that these certain situations existed. It's not the kind of thing that you want to try to work out right now in the time we have here tonight. But you could do, you could do a variety of changes to it if you felt that you could craft criteria that would make it up to it.
Because I'm thinking that, you know, we would, we have a bite at it in terms of, in terms of traffic study. I mean, the Board of Adjustment says yes, no. If they say no, it's a moot point. But if they say yes, then it comes to us for site plan, and we can say, look, it's like William says, they'd be concerned about pedestrians. Well, show us how you're not going to run over people on the sidewalk. That, I, you know, I mean, I guess that would be, again, I'm not opposed to it, so, but, okay.
Can I just ask a question of Rick?
I'm sorry, Mr. Blunkens up, sorry.
If it were to be allowed by special exception, is that pretty wide open? Or are there definite standards that would govern?
There are general standards that govern it. I mean, I can quickly read them off, but the, they are very general. And they're all judgment questions? So they are, for example, no hazard to the public or adjacent property in account of potential fire explosion or toxic materials, no detriment to property values, or change in the essential characteristics of the area because of scale of buildings, parking areas, accessways, odor, smoke, gas, dust, or other pollutant. And it's this kind of performance-type standards. There is a, no creation of a traffic safety hazard, or substantial increase in level of traffic congestion. But these are all, these all call on the applicant to make his case in the Board of Adjustment to determine whether the applicant has made his case. It's not, they're all, as I say, they're all kind of judgment, there's no hard and fast. Now, for some special exceptions, we have in our ordinance additional criteria. So we have, there are the general special exception criteria, in other places there are additional criteria, and I can't right now point you to an example of one of those. But that's why I was saying to, you know, in response to Don's question about, is there any option for changing it? You could establish standards that says, you know, that the drive-through shall not be within a certain distance of an intersection, or something like that. Just to make it much more specific.
You know, one more thing I was thinking of that just came to my mind is, you know, the master plan said walkability.
Right.
Are we then, I'm thinking, if you're going downtown and you're racing through a drive-through, shouldn't you be parking? I mean, aren't we trying to promote walkability?
Exactly.
And is this-
But this isn't going to be in the core downtown, this is the periphery.
See, I think that's what she's doing.
I think that we're going to be taken away from what our own master plan told us to do.
Right.
That's just a thought, but, you know, you want to promote park, hopefully you're bussing in, and you're walking. I don't know, just to me, it's one more, one more, somebody's running late and they're gonna, I just think it's promoting the wrong thing in the downtown, so.
Chairman?
Yes.
Don't you say, right now, this, you wouldn't consider this maybe the heart of downtown, but give it another five years, look at recent development. Downtown is moving down Maplewood Avenue. You're going to start seeing this more traffic area. Right now, yes, you could do a traffic stay, says, oh, there's not going to be that much people. Five years from now, I think we have a different story.
So the short story is, as a policy decision, either we have drive-throughs in downtown or the periphery, or we don't.
I think we don't. I think it's, I think it's a bad precedent, and I think special exceptions or variances, I think we just stop it and say no. That's just my opinion, but I don't know what the consensus of the board is, but, so. So, do we have a consensus? Do we have a motion?
Do you need a motion?
I think we do, need a motion.
Well, my mind can be changed.
I move that we recommend no change in this ordinance in terms of allowing accessory drive-through facilities in the CBA district.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? I'll call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, reluctantly.
The chair votes aye, so I think that was a good job.
Oh, sure, okay. Okay, now we are, so you're the chair, aren't you?
And now.
I'll move on to the last item under City Council Referrals and Requests. Item C, proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance and zoning map as set forth in the downtown parking omnibus dated March 18, 2011, of which there are five items. Section 10.1115, off-street parking provisions in the downtown overlay district. Sections 10.1115.21 and 10.1115.23, downtown parking omnibus, item one. Section 10.1115.30, optional payment in lieu of providing required off-street parking spaces. In section 10.1115.40, amount of payment in lieu, downtown parking omnibus, item two. Item three, section 10.440, table of uses residential, mixed residential business and industrial districts. In section 10.813, multifamily dwellings in the business district, downtown parking omnibus, item three. Item four, section 10.521, table of dimensional standards residential and mixed residential districts, downtown parking omnibus, item four. And the final item is item five, rezoning of the six parcels on Islington Street from general residence C to mixed residential business downtown parking- Street from general residency to mixed residential business, downtown parking omnibus, item
How, how will we approach this? Take one section and vote?
I think, yeah, I think, I think we should, is that the way we should do it, Rick? Should we go?
I, well, I would say we should take it at least, at least in maybe three, three chunks. I was, I was going to consider items one and two, and then items three and four, and then item five. They kind of go together. We, you could do it separately. You could do it individually.
I would strongly urge to do them separately.
So, let's go, we'll go to the first one, which is off-street parking provisions in the downtown overlay district.
General background, please. This, as you all know, this goes back to our adoption of the revised zoning ordinance back in November and December of 2009, when we were discussing, there was a lot of discussion about off-street parking at that point, and at that point, the parking requirements for most uses in the downtown area were reduced, and the in-lie payment amount per space was increased from about $1,300 to about $5,000. There was, as the first application came in, I believe the Board of Adjustment may have granted a variance for that, for that first application, and it went to the city council. City council directed, referred that whole issue to the planning board. There was an interim reduction in the fee, down to $2,000, I believe, per space, and a direction to the planning board to come up with, a recommendation for the planning board to come up with a different approach, which led to the formation of the downtown parking focus group, which Donald chaired, and the downtown parking group worked through the spring and into the early summer, prepared a report that was finalized in July, which had a number of recommendations. And those recommendations included eliminating parking requirements for all uses in the downtown except certain large uses, and there was, I believe there was a 20,000 square foot gross floor area cutoff there. Could have been a 40,000. There were a couple of different numbers there, and a target of, an overall target for those larger uses of 2.1 or 2.2 parking spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area, rather than the one per thousand that we had in our, in the ordinance that we adopted in the previous November, December. There was also discussion about whether, there was back and forth about whether there should be payment in lieu required for those larger uses. I, that was, that was not really clear, I don't think, from the report. Basically, the idea was the payment in lieu would disappear for all except for those large uses. And there were a number of other provisions, too. The, the idea of constructing a parking garage on the Worth Lot, and for, you, converting the, I believe, the conversion of the, or the use of parking revenues for downtown improvements was part of that as well. In any case, the report came out in July. It went to the city council. The city council discussed it in a couple of meetings, including a works, a work session in, I believe, November. As a result of that work session, staff was directed to bring a comprehensive package of parking policy changes back to the city council, which was the downtown parking omnibus. And in that process, also, we had the, a couple of work sessions with the Economic Development Commission, and then a joint work session with city council, planning board, and Economic Development Commission, which I believe was in late January, I think. And one of the concerns that was raised by the Economic Development Commission was the shifting balance of land uses in the downtown from, from commercial toward residential, and they were, they really wanted to include something in the omnibus that would address that. So, so what we have here is a combination of the zoning aspects of that. There's a, I think there are 10, 10 initiatives in the, in the overall omnibus, and the five of them are zoning. The first one here is to, addresses the changes in the parking standards, parking requirements per, per square foot, and the second one has to do with the payment in lieu, the third one with, the third and fourth one to do with residential, and the fifth is kind of an add-on to address some, some leftover parcels from the, from the last zoning ordinance change. So, with respect to that, then going to the omnibus, item one, the, the actual parking provisions, and I, and I do want to stress that any of the, the, all of the provisions in here are, are provided as, is provided as a framework, but the individual numbers are all obviously subject to change, as well as the, the overall framework itself. But the, looking at page three of the downtown parking omnibus, the first item, there are requirements in here for single-family, two-family dwelling and townhouses. Those really aren't being developed in the, in the CBD. Those can't be developed by right in the CBD anyway, so there's, there's no, it's just in there to preserve that for existing uses. Multifamily dwelling, one and a half spaces per dwelling unit, live-work unit, it's the same provision as we have in other parts of the city for live-work units. I think the key issue is the, is the non-residential uses, and what is being proposed here is no requirement for the first 20,000 square feet of gross floor area per lot, and then to have a parking requirement for more than 20,000 square feet gross floor area per lot. In the, in the draft here, it says one space per 200 square feet. After further consideration, I, I think that's, that's a higher requirement than needs to be. I would go along with the downtown parking focus group's request or recommendation to aim for a 2.1 or 2.2 spaces per thousand, and so I would suggest that we have one space per 400 square feet, GFA, over 20,000 square feet per lot, which is actually, is a ratio of 2.5 per thousand, but when you average it in with the, with the zero requirement for the first 20,000 square feet, it kind of works out over time. You, it gets, I've actually done the calculation for it, and if you, you would go at 50,000 square feet, you'd be down to two, an average of two spaces per thousand square feet, and at 100,000 square feet of gross floor area, you'd be down to 2.25. So, you're right about at the downtown parking focus group's recommendation. So, that's, that's thrown out there for consideration.
Mr. Coker.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Two things. One is, I'd like to see the live-work. I understand in other districts it may be higher, but I think it should be lower here. So, one space, or if we can tolerate that, or possibly even none. And then, I'm just wondering, how many, how many potential 20,000 square foot developments do we have in this district? And that's more because I, I think it's pretty large, and I might.
The, actually, what the, what the downtown parking focus group report said was for lots of 20,000 square feet or larger, and they noted that there are, basically, 10% of the lots in the downtown are 20,000 square feet or larger, but most of those are probably already developed.
Yeah.
So, there's probably, you know, maybe, I don't know, maybe half a dozen.
But you're talking lot area.
That's just lot area as opposed to building area, right.
Right. So, building area for 20,000, there could be.
Could be quite a few more.
Quite a few. I mean, building consolidation, lot consolidation.
So, I mean, okay, because I, I was thinking lot size, and it.
Yeah. Mr. Coker.
Well, as the chairman of the downtown, let me get the right terminology here.
Parking focus group?
The downtown parking focus group, I would like, for the record, to note that we did not make most of these recommendations. These recommendations were tacked on as part of the political process, which is the way it works. We recommended that we eliminate off-street parking requirements in CBA and CBB. Just a minor example of how some of these things got turned around, which on our report at page 13, we said, when lots are large enough, about 20,000 square feet or larger, then it would be wise for private users to supply at least some of their parking needs on-site or in partnership with the city. The report says here that, let me find it, downtown for all development projects except those on parcels of 20,000 square feet or larger and involving 40,000 square feet or more of gross floor area. It said, the focus group recommended that the city, I think it's, it's really important to make the distinction between what we said in our report and what has been sort of tacked on, if you will, as it worked its way through the, through the political process. There are things in here that are stunning. I mean, just $10,000 per space in lieu of, I mean, do some quick calculations, and, you know, 100 Market Street is 55,000 square feet. New Berries is roughly 50,000. Harbor Place is roughly 60,000. You know, I mean, I, I just, I'm really, really confused about how this is really shaking out. So, I, I think it's important that, I, I think basically, we just take our report, it just put it aside for a moment, and just let, let these recommendations stand on their own and debate them up or down, because some of these just don't make sense to me, so.
I'd just like to say, I, I totally agree that the, many of these weren't in the downtown parking focus group. That was a group that was designed to represent a particular viewpoint.
Correct.
And, and we also had other viewpoints involved. We had the city council and the Economic Development Commission and the discussion we had in the planning board. I think we would be wrong to simply just take one group's recommendations and just adopt them. I think we, you know, that's the whole point of this, this discussion of developing policy. The, and I don't think that I've, that we've actually said anywhere that all of these recommendations came from the downtown parking focus group. I think I've really tried to make a, a very strong statement that we started from that point of view, and then went to the city council, and went to the Economic Development Commission, and then did the joint work session. So, it's been an evolutionary process.
I, I agree, but some of these say, the focus group report also recommended that such and such and such, which really, you know, is not what we said. So, it, it doesn't matter at this point. I think basically.
Right, yeah.
I, I would just prefer not to for the integrity of the work that we did, and it was a lot of work. We, we just take these recommendations, straight up, straight down.
Oh, I don't think so. I think you really need to discuss them and, and make, you need to make changes to them.
Oh, absolutely.
Not straight up or straight, not straight up or straight down. That would be.
I'm sorry, that was the wrong choice of words. To, to debate these on their face and not refer to the parking report, and just take them, take them one at a time, and is it a good idea, sort of like the, you know, the drive-through, debate the point. So, I just wanted to make sure for the record that, that this group does not, does understand that the parking focus group did not make all of these recommendations. So, having made that point, let's move on.
What we should do is do one through five. If there's ones we're not sure of, I think, and I, you know, I think my opinion would be is we have a work session.
Yeah.
We, we pull all this stuff back up, we refocus. I don't think we can do it here tonight.
Right.
Oh, we could spend, you know, the $10,000 on a payment per space. I mean, you think nobody wanted to do anything at $5,000, you know? You would effectively kill any development downtown. I think that would be the net result, so.
And again, but I don't think in, as many things we had tonight, I don't think everybody focused, I'm saying maybe everybody else but me did, all their energy and effort on all these to know them as thoroughly as we did when we had all these other applications tonight, so.
It would be, would it be, Mr. Chairman, if I may, would it be reasonable to take public input? I think people have stayed here for, for.
We didn't advertise a public hearing.
Right.
Yeah, I'd rather have a separate work session.
Yeah, I, I think we should just, this should be an in-house issue right now. So, Ms. Gafford.
I strongly support the work session, because I started going through this and thought, uh, and, and, you know, came up with little one-offs, but really, I think that'd be much better.
Do we want to address all five items at the work session, or do we want to break items out separately?
Um.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hayden, I'm sorry.
My apologies. I was at the budget work session next door.
Welcome.
You know, thank you so much. One thing that I would suggest maybe would be helpful when we get to a work session format is for, to do examples of how, you know, an X number of square foot residential, non-residential under current zoning would be impacted dollar-wise, number of spaces-wise, and then examples of, with various proposals at various fee levels. I think that might help people get their minds around what we're talking about here. My own thinking is, we schedule the first work session, and we get through as much as we can, you know, rather than saying we're just going to have, schedule one work session for one and two, or whatever.
Well, we'll do a six to seven, or six-thirty to seven-thirty, whatever. And what we get through, we get through.
And, and what might be helpful, given the late hour, is what other information would be helpful to the board to have when we get to that work session? And we could give copies of the, you know, parking committee report again, if people want, just so that's, you know, in case people don't have them anymore.
Well, you mentioned examples, including.
And those examples, yeah.
How this might affect things financially. I wasn't sure what you meant specifically by that.
Well, say you had a 10,000 square foot non-residential development under current zoning. If this, if this, if this proposal was applied, what would the cost be for parking spaces?
Good, that's what I was.
And also total number of spaces that they'd have to provide, et cetera.
And, and maybe I, if, where we can, and I know it's difficult, the matrix, matrix gets big, but again, if you can kind of highlight, are we talking 700 buildings downtown, or we talk, you know, and I, and I understand that.
Sure.
Let's assume that they're four-story buildings and 2,500 square foot, something like that. I, I don't know if it's easy for you to print it out, but.
It would be easy, yeah.
You know, if we're only talking one lot here, I, I think we were doing the Congregate Care, you know, that was what, five, seven parcels, something like that?
Yeah, right.
So, I think that's a help to let people know, too, what it impacts. So, I think these five, then, we will set up a work session. Can staff get information to us before the next meeting?
Sure, sure, absolutely. Hi, and Dewey.
At what point can the public weigh in on this? Because I think it is vitally important that we hear from people that not, don't deal with this in the abstract, which is what we're doing, but somebody that's like you, that's out there building the Bow Street Building, and how that would impact somebody like you. I mean, we have attorneys in the audience, we have developers in the audience. I'd like to hear from them, even in the work session. And I don't know if we take public input in the work session, but.
No.
You know, what, what I would suggest is, let the planning board have their work session, because, you know, there's all sorts of people to hear from. There's the Economic Development Commission, already heard from, the city council, already heard from, the parking focus group, already heard from. We don't really have a proposal right now for the public to weigh in on. And, and when, when the public would typically weigh in is the, the public hearing at the city council, when they do or don't pass an ordinance. So, you know, my concern about having a public hearing when we're only this far along in the process is, what are people commenting on? You know, I think, I think.
Well, I think they're commenting, they would be commenting on what's sitting in this, even though they're only suggestions at this point. I would agree.
Right, but the board is not saying, "Oh, we love these. These are great. Let's recommend back to the city council that this is where we want to go." The board is saying, "Let's have a work session and talk about these some more." And if you, and if you have a work session, it's a work session where you've got moving parts, so it's just not, you know, the right time to have people weigh in, I don't think.
What a suggestion may be is, we have a public hearing if we think we've got it, excuse me, we have a work session, just, obviously open to the public, but just us talking. If we get in a format we like, maybe perhaps the next steps are public hearing on that. That, that again, we can achieve both, but I think we need as.
A public hearing is a planning board or the city council public hearing?
We could, we could have a.
You could do your own if you wanted to, yeah. There's no, there's no requirement for you to do a public hearing, as there is for the city council, but you could, you could do one if you wanted to.
I, I think in this case, where this matrix is so big that we have our own in-house, we need to listen to each other first.
Correct.
Let's figure out, and then if somebody comes in and says, "Hey, have you thought of it?" No, we hadn't thought of that, but.
That's why the public is so important.
I think we do a work session first, and then if we need to, we go to a public hearing on it.
Or two, or three work sessions, whatever we need to do.
Correct.
To make it happen.
I think Cindy's correct. We'll pick an hour, get through as much as we can. If we don't, we'll reconvene the next month, or whatever it is, or if we need a special meeting, or whatever it is. But I think we, as a, as a, as a board, need to get our act together, and, does that make sense, Rick?
Yeah, I, I do think it makes sense. I think that, looking at the issues here, we may just want to have the work session on the first two items. I mean, there's a lot in those, in the parking items that's separate from the whole residential piece, and I think that we might want to just focus on that for the first work session.
And then let, let's take the last 10 minutes and go through three, four, and five ahead, and make sure we're comfortable. And if we are, we can put them on the back end of the agenda.
Yep.
Get those off, and then, so I think that makes sense to me. So, Ms. Gafford.
Sorry, I, I just, I don't have a good handle on what the city's plans are. I'm looking at you, Cindy, just because I don't, I think as a planning board, we're supposed to be planning for parking, and if, for example, the Worth Lot's going to get developed, that would really help in, in. in, in terms of understanding whether we need to impose requirements, or, or, and I don't.
Right, and, go ahead, Rick.
I was just gonna say, the, the focus group report said that we had a shortage of somewhere around three hundred to three hundred and fifty parking spaces. And so the Worth Lot Garage, if it gets built, and, and that's the intent at this point, would solve an existing shortage problem. Would bring us essentially, according to the focus group report, would bring us up to balance between supply and demand in the downtown right now. So that future growth, there needs to be parking spaces created in accordance with any future growth. So I think one of the things, in, in looking at these options, um, and thinking about the materials that I would prepare for you, I would also want to look at how much parking the city would have to build under various scenarios. So if we don't require any parking, how many garages do we need to build? If we require developments to provide half of their parking, how many garages do we need to build, that kind of stuff? So it's, and then how much would that cost? And I think that's the other side of the equation. We want to look at the cost to developers, but we also want to look at the cost to the taxpayer. And those, those are.
That's kind of what I was.
And it does all go back to that question, who provides parking? Who pays for parking? Who builds parking? Public, private? And that's, that's where we've been. Discussing that question.
Well, that was a very important part of this report.
So I think we're all set. Let, let's also, um, at that work session, do, do we want a justice board? Do we want a rep from the parking focus group, the EDC? Do we want?
I would strongly suggest just this board for now.
Yeah.
All right, good.
I mean, only because there has been so much process with so many boards.
That's fine.
And groups.
And, and just to close it out, is it something that, Cindy, we could get a forecast? I know ML, I don't know if she asked for it, but, you know, what, what's the, is there a, a short-term, long-term structure forecast from the city?
We can bring you up to date on, because it will have changed by that.
As best you can.
The Worth parking lot, and then parking fee changes, et cetera, that the council is voting on right now.
Okay, and I think that would make sense, and if we can get that, are we gonna shoot for next month?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So do we need to have a motion on this?
I don't think you need a motion to, just to set up a work session. We'll schedule for you.
Okay, so we don't need to take any action on this, then?
I would suppose.
Do we make a, a, a refer, uh?
I want to just defer action, make a motion to defer action to the main meeting?
I think we should, I think we should make a.
Probably would be worthwhile to at least notify the city council that we're scheduling a work session or two, or whatever.
So I, I think we should have a motion on this.
So moved.
Go ahead.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Well, what was the motion?
Motion to defer action.
Schedule a work session.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Are you, are you the one? Well, hey, 'cause I'm, I'm for it, so are you opposed?
No, no, I'm for it, I'm for it, to defer.
Thank you, I, I think that was a, I think that was the right thing to do. I want to move on, it's getting late. Uh, we've got one item under new business. The application of Mitchell A. Hyder and Edward A. Hyder, owners voluntary merger of four lots at two ninety-five Woodbury Ave. Woodbury Avenue unnumbered, six seventy-seven Denet Street and six fifty-nine Denet Street, and to a single lot containing forty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven square feet. Said property is shown on Assessor Map one sixty-one as lots thirty-one and thirty-two, and on Assessor Map one seventy-five is lot six and six A, and lies within the general residence A district. Rick, are we?
Yes, I just wanted, this is a, a notification. Mr. Schagman, the applicant is, representative is here to speak to this.
Thank you.
Quick presentation?
Please.
Sure. What you have before you is a request to consolidate, um, four parcels that are on the corner of, um, Denet Street and Woodbury Avenue. At points of time in the past, there were residential structures on the three Denet Street lots. The, uh, lot six, six A was, uh, actually a part of the Route One bypass, uh, right away, but was needed back with an easement on it to, uh, to the adjacent, uh, same owner as the adjacent parcels. So they're all owned by one party, but currently shown as four tax map lots. We'd like to combine them, and, uh, the purpose is to, um, come forward, uh, with a development that would be a multi-family on the combined lot. We'd like your occurrence of, of this action tonight.
So, uh, just, Rick, you're the.
Yeah, this is a, this is an unusual situation, or, I guess it's maybe not that unusual, but we don't see it that often. Uh, there's a state, there's provision of a state law here, which basically says that as long as the application, uh, meets certain criteria, which are listed here, um, the, the planning board must vote to approve the merger. So the planning board has to vote, there's no public hearing required. You just simply need to, um, you vote to approve it and designate me to, to sign off on it.
We'll do it.
There you go. You need a motion?
Yes, you need a motion.
Norman?
Move to approve the application for, for the voluntary merger. And authorize the planning director to endorse the notice.
Second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair will side. Back to John. Thank you. Last item is the planning director's report.
I have one item for you. I wish you, I wish you were a little bit shorter, but.
A complete zoning rewrite.
No, no, there's a, um, I, I believe that you may have received a memo from a, I'm not sure, was that distributed to the board?
Yes, that's.
So it's, it's about ninety-seven to ninety-nine Porpoise Way. We have a special provision in our zoning ordinance regarding lots that were shown on the nineteen nineteen plan of Atlantic Heights, uh, and, uh, where there's a structure that was constructed prior to nineteen eighty-two. The property owners simply have to notify me, and then I notify you, that they are separating the lots as shown on the nineteen nineteen plan. So I have been notified, and, uh, I am notifying you that, uh, those are going to be separated and transferred. Nothing you have to do about it.
Great. Now that.
That's it.
Any other business? Do we have a call for German?
Second.
Thank you, good night.